Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:18 PM. Tonight, I would like to ask that we do a special moment of silence in recognition of our dear friend who we lost yesterday, Alice Sadargus, longtime educator, principal, and school board member for many, many years. And so, I would like you to have her in your thoughts and her family as we do a moment of silence, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have our coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Dr. Herner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We do not have any media students here tonight, but I'll, we'll move on and have Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. do our special student and staff recognitions.
Thank you and good evening. We have a room, a room full of wonderful student athletes with us this evening and with their parents. I don't think they're all here, so we may have to call some of them back, but we certainly want to recognize the ones that are here. First, we have after a strong showing at sectionals, four students from East High School's student publications qualified for the state tournament at Eastern Illinois University. Congratulations to Steph Nold, who competed in newspaper layout and design, Jordan Hungate, who competed in feature photography, Tony Zick, who competed in the yearbook theme development, and Josie Janiki, who competed in infographics. They are all here this evening. Please join me in congratulating them for their wonderful accomplishment. Their coaches here as well and their parents. Next, we have the Flynn Bowlers in the house. All right, Flynn, woo! In IESA bowling, both Flynn and Marshall had boys' and girls' teams compete in state tournaments. Thurgood Marshall School has the number-one individual boys' bowler in the state. Matthew Siegel took first place in the IESA middle schools bowling, middle school boys' bowling tournament with a total pinfall of 2,119. As a team, Marshall Boys took 10th in the state with a total pinfall of 5,842. Flynn Middle Schools' Teagan Peterson took 7th place in the state for IESA middle school girls' bowling tournament. As a team, Flynn Girls took 8th place with a total pinfall of 5,589. Let's give it up for the Flynn Bowling Team. And their parents. And their coach.
Hey, Coach.
Good job. Good job. And last but certainly not least, I believe we have some Guilford tennis players with us this evening. Guilford High School's doubles team of Cristo Alexander and Ian Beaman defeated their first two sets of opponents in the IHSA state tournament before losing in the third round of the doubles championship. Let's give it up for Cristo Alexander and Ian Beaman for their accomplishment.
Yeah, okay. He lost. Djokovic lost.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
Thank you. Great job, everyone. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes. I think we have three speakers tonight. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, one whose turn it is to speak and the person who will be next. If you're the second person, please come to the front, sit in the front, and we'll have the clock going for you, help you with your time. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Ricky Nayler, to be followed by Jane Hayes. Ricky, if I have you turn the microphone on when you come up? Okay?
Time started yet? Okay, I'm down here. You guys know I've been requesting a lot of documents from you guys. I'm pretty sure you guys know that. I mean, but what we trying to get at, the group that I work, what we trying to get at, you guys know that you got five schools in this district that's been on the list of failing kids. I'm not gonna say these kids failed school. It's pretty much like these schools are failing kids and there has seemed to be nothing done about it. Even like with, over at West Middle School right now, you got a school that's in real need of being turned around, but yet you put somebody over there- put somebody over there that has no experience in turning around schools. I'm wondering what is going to happen out of that. And then I'm, then I'm looking, when we sit around and was talking about this stuff, we keep going through ideas, well, we could do this at this school, we could do this, we can do that. But then it always comes back to the fact that it doesn't matter what you do until we get this system to change. This system is broken, so therefore, that's why you got these broken schools. Until this board come together and start holding this staff accountable for results, nothing's going to change. I mean, it's like, you know, it's like we got one doctor in the group and said, you know what, you guys are dealing with symptoms. You're not dealing with the disease. This system is a disease, so we need to deal with the system, then hopefully, we can fix these other school problems. And to me, if I'm a board member, you, we already know this board has a low confidence in the community, so you need to be worrying about how do we restore confidence in this institution? What do we do? I mean, you got the same people, you don't want to bring nobody in that disagree with you. Maybe if you did that, people say, okay, now we can trust now what comes out of that body. But you don't want to do that. You just keep, you know, making these safe choices, hire these safe people to, like I said, if you want to change though, and then you guys gave a failing charter school a new contract, again, $6 million, again, to go out there and fail kids. That, to me, doesn't make any sense. So I know my time is up, so I respect that.
Thank you, sir. Jane Hayes, to be followed by Kate Schnell.
We, the watchdogs for ethics and education, are still vigilantly trying to expose the lack of transparency for viable information from District 205. We have written numerous Freedom of Information Act requests that are clearly substandard in information, denied because of privacy or personnel issues, and/or duplicated poorly, leading us to believe our efforts are troubling the legal department, forcing us to go beyond the district to the state Attorney General's office with success. After hearing a board member's request for information regarding cars used by this district, we submitted a formal FOIA. While the district responded that our FOIA was granted with forked tongue, they admitted that the district does not have in its possession the documents describing district vehicles taken home by employees. What? Why? And how come? Now the district's legal department has until June 10th to send us, as well as the state, answers to the queries that we've requested. Misleading the public is inexcusable, so we can, so we have to turn to the state for compliance. What we really need is to hire a forensic accountant to go through the district finances and accounts. Because if we follow the money, the likelihood of discrepancies and indiscretions may astound the public. What we need is the truth. And let's not forget, the Chicago Public Schools CEO Barbara Bird Bennett resigned June 1st amid a federal probe of $20 million for a no-bid contract. The public sector employees have got to provide ethical and fiduciary responsibilities for public money that should be used in the name of education. Cronyism, conflict of interests, abuse of public trust and funds, and misinformation. Hmm. Sound familiar? Dear Alice, we need you more than ever. Send down your guidance from above.
Thank you. Kate Schnell.
Well, as my T-shirt says, "The more you have, the more you need." It's the guy in the hamster wheel. It's called greed. Oh, to be a BFF of the top dog in 205, a black face and a white face. CDC lady, diversity council lady, we got diversity. An African-American PR man, surrounded by the largest and most expensive media crew ever assembled by 205, will now be voted on for a salary of $126,363 in 2015 under a four-year contract, up to $136,000 in 2018. Just this month, in the Elgin School District, larger than ours, U46 hired in their head PR for $105,000. Mark Bonnie of Sheffield era, "Thank you for doing so much, and so much better, with less staff and less money," exactly $75,000, to be exact, he said, I could say it. BFF from Hananeega, and startup consulting partner, from an $89,000 hire in July for the 2011-2012 school year, to the proposed vote, vote tonight of $135,000 for the 2015-16 school year. That's a 62% raise in four years. Virginia Slims, got nothing on you. You've come a long way, baby. You got to be old to appreciate that joke. Anyway, does it really matter? The majority of our public school kids can't read, write English, or do math well enough to get into post-secondary programs. You will be get, you will, sorry, you'll get paid long and well, as you and the PR guy spin the data. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Are there any board member comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following meeting minutes of May 26, 2015, the purchase orders, payroll, counts payable, contracts under $10,000, travel, and I do want to make a note that the travel for Dr. Hickman has been pulled by administration. That would be under sub and F. Eight is bid recommendations for the 15-28 new school buses, 15-36, the uniformed security officers, 15-51, the Whitehead Elementary School additions and renovations, and 15-55, the Nashold Elementary School asbestos abatement, renewal of agreement with the University of Wisconsin Platteville, the engineering services for tennis court reconstruction at two high schools, and land acquisition and development adjacent to Lincoln Middle School, the certified speech and language pathologist contract with Sun Belt, and the plan administrators renewal, as well as other consent items, including the Freedom of Information log and the IHSA member, membership renewal. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
So, 7E?
7E, okay.
8.
All of 8?
Yep, all of 8.
Okay.
You've read off 9, correct? Okay, 9, A, B, C.
9A, B, and C.
And 10A.
10A. Ms. Powers?
So, I'm embarrassed to ask this question, but I'll ask it anyway. And it's really, I guess, for Attorney Holdly. So, when we have the Freedom of Information log, what exactly are we approving when we approve it? The fact that I haven't necessarily seen the responses that have been given to people who have requested information, so when, in fact, we take board action, what exactly are we approving?
Ms. Holdly?
You are accepting the log as part of the official documentation. You're not approving the-
The content, just the log.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
I think I lost it. Was it 8A, the buses? Is that, are you in?
Yes. All of the, all of it has been pulled.
Thank you. I didn't take that.
Any others? Okay. The coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I will, I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 7E, the contracts under $10,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Questions and discussions on contracts. Ms. Jackson?
I do. So, the ramp, the vendor is ramp, and it's for the teens in transition. What did we approve at the last board meeting? I thought it was a contract for this. This is on the $10,000 and under, and I could be mistaken, but I thought the agenda item was pulled two weeks ago, and there was discussion about it.
Teens in transition thing, yeah.
Yes, I recall Mrs. Powers pulled it, I thought, and there was discussion.
So, this is just submitting the bill that I was waiting to process until you, the board took action, because it was, the two semesters together went over $10,000. So, this is the bill that was presented after the board took action at the last board meeting.
How much over $10,000?
It was $20,000, the two semesters. That's why it came to board, because it went, with this bill that you're looking at tonight, it would have gone over 20. So, I took it to board for approval, and at the last boarding, board meeting, that was approved. So then I, I sent it through for payment at that point.
Any other questions or discussion?
Can I just clarify, there wasn't actually a contract under $10,000. It should have had a consulting contract with it, which Ms. Cyrus corrected after that oversight was recognized. And so, I'm not sure why finance put this under, contracts under $10,000. It's really a payment, because there was no underlying contract.
So, will this be corrected, then? Does it need to be correct? Because this is under contracts under $10,000.
It, it doesn't need to be corrected, really, because then you approved the $20,000 total spend for the, for ramp.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Yes, on the CDW, it looks we had 10 PC technicians to assist with a phone and desktop rollout engagement for a minimum of four weeks. That's not something that could have been done in-house.
So, this is part of CDW. We receive many services and, and hardware from, through a state contract. And this is to provide, if it's the one that I'm thinking of, it's to provide the after-hours and before-hours help desk service to staff. I'd have, I think that's what it's for.
Okay. Attorney Holdly, you're saying, is that true? Is that what it's for?
Any other questions on 7E? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the, roll call on the approval of consent item, contracts under $10,000.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Would you like me to do items 8 separately or together? Separately.
Separately.
All right. So, I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 8A, which is the new school buses.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Harner. Questions and discussion under item 8A, new school buses. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, so we had another discussion about this topic at the Operations Committee, and I'll say that the Operations Committee seems still to desire that we try to buy more school buses in this. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, originally, the administration budgeted five buses for next fiscal year. They've increased that to 10 buses with this bid recommendation. They did that by changing some of the revenue assumptions in the budget, which is how they found the money to do the extra five buses. To me, I'd like to have this, I'd really like to have this as part of the budget discussion. I don't think there's a hurry here. We were told at the Operations Committee, and I think I reported last time, that even as it is right now, by the time the administration first brought us the recommendation on buses, we weren't going to get the new buses before school started. We were going to have to prep all of the current buses for the new school year. That being the case, I don't know that there's really an urgency here in getting this contract awarded until we know for sure, under the budget that's approved by the board at the next meeting, you know, how many, how many buses we're actually buying. And in that context, you know, I just want to say, you know, the more I think about this, the more worried I am. We have 271 buses, 93 of them are over 10 years old. Our goal is to replace 10, 10% of them a year, which would be 27 buses. With this bid, we're getting one other bus through a grant program. We're only buying 11 buses this year, which is a shortfall of 16 buses, which means just to get back on track next year, we will have to buy 43 buses next year. 43 buses. We're having trouble buying 10 this year. We're kicking and scratching and clawing to buy 10 buses this year, and next year, it's going to be 43. And the more shortfall we have this year, the more money we're going to have to come up with next year to buy buses. So, I really think we ought to have a conversation as part of the budget about whether we can find some money elsewhere in the budget that we can use to buy more buses, so that we're not in that position next year.
Ms. McCullough?
I'm going to make a motion to table this vote until the budget is passed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Connor?
I'd like Mr. Schmidt to comment on if there is any impact.
I'm going to have Mr. Wilson comment on that.
Through the purchasing department, they sent a letter. One of the questions was, could we get the $1,000 discount on less than the 25? The answer came back from that as a no, that that was a factory rebate. The other piece is that we have extended to the end, it was a 60-day contract, 60-day for the bid process. They extended it through this meeting tonight. We have been told that there will be a 3.5% increase, and we'll have to go out for rebid.
Ms. Powers, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right. Ms. McCullough?
So, I'm not understanding the impact of that. Are we, we're not going to get the $1,000, because we have less than the original number in the bid, correct?
That is correct. The bid was put down, if we purchased 25 buses, the factory would give us a $1,000 per unit rebate. If we buy only 10, we will not get that $1,000 per unit rebate.
And on top of that, when would the 3% kick in?
They have given us, through the board meeting tonight, they've extended it twice from the original bid process. The original bid was for 60 days as a price guarantee. They've extended it twice through tonight, and they said it was a 3.5% increase on the buses overall.
And, so that's, what is it, 87, and so it's going to go up to 88 or something like that per bus?
It's $90,000 per bus right now.
$90,000 minus the trade. That is correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr.?
Well, the net cost is $87,000.
Okay.
Yeah, with the trade. That's the net cost with the addition of the $1,000 that we're going to have to pay. See, I, I hear the, the will of the board is, is, or some of board members, and the conversation that I listened to at the Ops Committee was that the concern for additional buses, not, not getting less. And so, if we have to go out for bid again, it would be not with probably 25. I don't know where that is in the, in the budget to get 25, that you originally was bid, but certainly, hopefully, something between the 10 and the 25. And your concern is just this 3%, which equals what? 3% of the full purchase price?
About $3,000, probably.
Can you build on the 60 days as well, Mr. Wilson?
Per bus, per bus.
We can receive the buses in 60 days if we approve it tonight?
They said it would be here, the first part of September, they believed the buses would be here. Again, the other thing on the reimbursement is we're reimbursed from the time we get the buses over the months that we have them. So, again, we would not get the full 12-month reimbursement the further in we go.
What would be the arrival date if we delayed it till the next meeting, after rebidding it and putting it out?
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you that. I'd have to go back to the vendor.
Could you estimate that would be a month or two pushed back, or, or are we just talking? I mean, I know you can't nail it down perfectly, but to rebid, then we would have to bring it back to the board?
Correct. We'd have to put the bid out, the timing of the bid, receive the bids, open the bids, and then bring it back, I would assume, to Operations Committee. Again, I don't know what the factory schedule is right now to comment for the dealership.
So, but the comment at the last meeting, was it the last meeting that we, that we did not pass the five buses, because we wanted more buses, and now we have the 10 buses, and we're saying, well, we probably still need more buses, and we need to really see the budget, and if there is money for it. But the comment at that meeting clearly what, to the board members was, if you don't pass it today, we're not going to have them for the fall. Now, it's, you'll have them for the fall, you just won't have them for the start of school. So, if that's the case, will you still be doing all the maintenance work on the buses that you have, under the guise of, well, we still have to have all the buses in the best tip-top shape for the start of the school year, or will you say, oh, well, we can, we don't have to do that on the 10 buses, for example, that we're going to turn in?
The buses have to be prepped and go through- The buses have to be prepped and go through a, every six months, a state inspection. They're all due during the summer for the state inspection. The difference would be if we know that we're trading 10 of them, those buses we'd look at and say, do they need brakes? Or will they meet the inspection without brakes? Again, it's a matter of going into it, can we get an extra month or two out of them? Or are we going a full six months before the next inspection? So some of them would not have as much maintenance as the majority.
But you don't have an analysis as to what the cost savings would be on that?
I do, I do not on that.
So we really don't have a clear picture economically of what we'll be saving. Mr. Rollins, can you talk a little bit more about what was said at Ops Committee and?
Well, my recollection is that, not even at the last Ops Committee, but the Ops Committee before that, we were told that you were going to have to prep these buses for the fall anyway. So, you know, I'm hearing something a little bit different tonight. And at the Ops Committee, I mean, I think there was just, we were given an analysis, actually, most of the analysis we were given was based on buying 15 buses. So I was a little surprised when I saw the packet that was included, that had a recommendation for 10 buses. And most of the discussion at the Ops Committee was just, we ought to be trying to figure out ways to buy more buses. I mean, keep in mind that the more buses that we buy, the more reimbursement we're going to get from the state. So there's a, we get more than 50% of the cost of these buses reimbursed by the state if we buy them. I, I had a question for Mr. Wilson. So I thought that we went out on our bid, that we went out for multiple different quantities, which is, so the 10 buses, is that on the original bid? Or did we rebid those based on 10 buses?
The original bid was for 25 buses. Through the building to the budget, they came up with the five buses, then they came up with the 10 buses. And again, we went out originally for 25 buses. There was no separate bill, bid for five or 10. That was a.
So what was the whole discussion? I just heard about having to rebid. If we've been able to go back to them and say, we only want to buy five buses, or we only want to buy 10 buses, we can't just go back to them and say, we only want to buy 15 buses? Or now we want to buy 20 buses? Whatever the number ends up being?
Again, I'm, I got an email through the Purchasing Department that explained, asking the question about the $1,000. We can buy up to 25 buses at the given price with the discount. If we buy less than the 25, which we can buy, it would be without the discount.
So we don't really have to rebid?
We, if we go beyond today's meeting, the day the bid was held through today's meeting, according to the email that was sent to Purchasing.
Okay. But who sent that email to?
That, that was the question asked of the salesman, and he contacted the factory, and he is the one that submitted the email.
Okay. So he's only holding his pricing firm through today?
That is correct.
So we have a motion and a second on the table right now for delaying the.
Can I ask another question?
Sure, absolutely.
So part of this with the budget piece is later on, when we talk about the budget, one of the things that board members had asked and spoke about was that the salaries that are being captured currently in our general budget, that are, are dedicated to the facilities, the whole new facilities plan, will be moved actually into that budget for next year. And we've asked for that number. We haven't received it. I hear we're going to get it tonight. But I don't have that number in my brain to be able to say, okay, we're going to be moving this much over, and it's 500,000. And so I'd like to add five more buses, and let's go for 15 while we have the $1,000 less. And so that is part of the reason that I made the motion until we pass the budget. Perhaps we just need to have a conversation with, about the budget and just then come back and visit this bus issue and how much we can actually afford later this, during this meeting. You seconded it, didn't you, Mr. Rollins? No, who was it?
Dr. Herner?
Dr. Herner.
You have a question?
So Ms. Holy, do I have to amend it to at least table it until later in the meeting? How do I do it? Do we vote this down and then do a second? And then do another one?
Dr. Herner, you had a question?
Well, so I guess the, sorry, I'm asking a budget question, I guess, I don't know. But, I mean, what is the likelihood that we're going to find money for five more buses in the budget? Or the next alternative is to deficit spend somewhere?
And I just said to you that one of the places that we had asked for more information about, and you were part of the Facilities Task Force, the employee, people that we have employed specifically to carry out that facilities plan, their salaries are going to be captured under the facilities and all that money that we have there. And it's currently in our budget. And so that would be a large amount of money. Again, I don't know how much.
I don't know, well.
Because.
It may or may not be large, and we don't know exactly what the break.
Well, we've been asking for it for quite a while, and we're going to hear the number tonight. And so when we hear that number, we could make a more informed decision on whether or not we can afford more buses while we're still getting this $1,000 discount and not the 3.5% raise. So I'm just saying that I'm willing, since I, since I can't withdraw, I'm willing to vote down my motion to table and then resubmit one to at least table until the end of the evening, if that's.
Mr. Connor?
Mr. Wilson, what was the original cost for 25 buses, roughly?
With the discount, it was 2.1 million.
So 2.1 million, and we're talking about spending for 10, 870, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So however we slice it, we're going to have to have a substantial amount of money we're going to take from somewhere to fund additional buses. That was the other part of the discussion at Ops, is that while it's nice to get some of this money back, we have to find that to, that money to close that hole. The other part is, if I remember you correctly, you said that there is an average age target, and I thought it was 50% of a certain range of age, like eight, nine years. Was that correct?
Again, if you do the 10% turnaround, you're replacing roughly at five years, five to six years, is the perfect turnaround. Again, we're trading buses that are giving us major problems, that the warranties would be coming off in August. Some of these buses have had two, three engines through the dealership through warranty. So we're not trading the oldest buses in the fleet, but we're trading those that have a track history of breaking down and engine failures.
All right. And now, the, the point was brought up about the turnover in how many buses on average per year. So is it true that if we don't buy, I'll make up a number, the 25, that we'll have to do, say, 40 or some number next year? Is that correct?
If you want to get back to the 10% turnover, that is correct. You'd have to increase your purchase.
And if we were to do those numbers, so if we were to do the, let's say, we were to do 25, let's say we found the money, would that then put us on track to that goal? Is that the idea?
It would definitely get us going back in the correct direction. Four years ago, we didn't buy bus, five years ago and six years ago, we didn't buy buses, and that's why we're behind. You know, we're trying to catch up from being behind already and not to buy them. Two years ago, we bought 14 instead of the 27. So we're trying to catch up, and the 25 will help, but it will not get us to the 10% or the 10-year turnaround.
Okay. So even if we were to do the 25, so I think one of the, so two points. One is that I think it is a large amount of money, depending on how many buses, and that was part of the consideration. The second thing is, from an operational standpoint, it sounds like we are making up for deficits in the past. And I think as part of the recommendation, one of the things I'd say is that it would make sense for us to say, hey, here's the average we should have, or our target. And so I think the, the one thing I'll say is, I'm not particularly keen on taking money away from other parts of the budget, and I understand that this is an issue. But I'll just say that we talked long and hard about the number of buses and asked the administration to come up with the cuts. We've already cut almost, what, $17 million to, to go for next year? So I think I would be concerned about piling on that.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Can you read back that motion, Ms. Fromm?
The motion is to table the vote on bid recommendation IFB-28, the new school buses.
Call, do you have another question, Ms. Jackson?
I do, well, because I'm actually looking at the budget document, and we're talking about, I guess, cutting money. But on two, for just for reorganizational adjustments for salaries, that's $325,000, just between two lying items. For about, what, I think, four, six people? So we might be able to look at the budget and see.
Clarify that?
Ms. Jackson, just to clarify, that's for 450 non-bargaining people, that $300,000 number you cited.
Okay.
No, it's not, but.
Call, call the roll on the motion to table. Item 8A.
Mrs. McCullough?
No.
Dr. Herner?
No.
Mr. Connor?
No.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Scovano?
No.
The motion fails by a vote of seven to zero.
Ms. McCullough?
So now I'd like to make a motion to, to table the vote on the buses until, Ms. Holy, help me, until the end of the meeting, till, after the discussion of.
Tonight's budget presentation?
Tonight's budget presentation, but also at the end of meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? The coordinator call the roll on the motion to move this to the last item on our agenda tonight.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
No.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
I'm sorry. May you please read back what I am being asked to vote on?
This is to table the vote on IFB-28, the purchase of new school buses, to the end of the meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
No.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The vote pass, the motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
We'll move on then to item 8B, which is the bid recommendation for the uniform security officers. Is there a motion and a second for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Questions or discussion on item 8B? Ms. Jackson?
Yes. May someone provide a brief overview? Like, for example, is there an increase to the contract? Increasing bodies?
Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Deal?
Mr. Deal will answer those questions. Good evening. Ms. Jackson, can you repeat the question, please?
I asked for an overview. So for example, is there an increase in the dollars? An increase in the number of folks or whatever?
Okay. So with the new contract, what we're going to do, we expect to experience about $100,000 to $150,000 drop the first year. The guard numbers will remain about the same. There'll be a slight decrease. And this contract actually has a more robust professional development component with it that is assigned to the company that gets the contract.
Connor?
I assume when we put this out, that we are compelled to take the low bid? Is that correct?
This indeed was a bid.
So.
Most responsible bid, correct.
When we have, and I believe we have Andy Frain today, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. During the body of the contract, do we have certain criteria that we expect from the vendor? Like an evaluation of how effective, whatever the metrics are?
That is correct. We do have a satisfaction survey. We survey three schools a month. They have to maintain, out of a five-point scale, a minimum of three. Andy Frain has done over four, 4.25, 4.30, the entire time they've had the contract. The new bidder will be expected to achieve the same, to maintain the contract, above a three.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers?
Can you speak to the, is, does the contract go up then in years two and beyond? I mean, those are the savings for the initial year. Could you speak to the full life of the contract?
I certainly can. And it was a little surprising, the, the winning bidder basically came down in price out of the five years, two of those years with very minimal increases in the subsequent year. So year one was a little higher than year two, year two came down, year three went up a little bit, year four went down, and year five went up a little bit again.
So what accounts for the fluctuation?
I, I'd like to be able to answer that question, however, I cannot.
I mean, if it's the same number of buildings with the same level of. Right. But I'm, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you asked.
Do we account for school closing and consolidations?
I don't believe that was a component of their bid packet. We do have two of them in the audience if we, if we want to ask questions of them. But I believe that with this bid for this year, there is a slight reduction. Correct. And that's another thing. Our staffing levels can either go up or down depending on the need.
And my last question is, where is this company based out of?
They're based out of Chicago.
Ms. McCullough?
Did Ops have a, Mr., Mr. Rollins, did Ops have a conversation about this bid?
No.
Contract? And you didn't bring forward all the data on the previous, on the Andy Frain and their performance and?
This did not go before the Ops Committee, no.
Coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 8B, uniform security officers.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, we'll move on then to item 8C, which is the Whitehead Elementary School additions and renovations. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCullough. Any questions or discussion on item 8C? Seeing none. The coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 8C.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 8D, which is the Nash Hold Elementary School Asbestos Abatement Project.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Ms. McCullough. Any questions on item 8D? Not, I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the approval of 9A, the renewal of the agreement with the University of Wisconsin, Platteville.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Any questions or discussion on 9A?[1746.02] The coordinator, Ms. Jackson, I'm sorry.
Just a question, did the price remain the same?
Mr. Carson?
No, the price did not remain the same. That was explained in the executive summary. It was a significant reduction as we are not, we will be using our own staff in the coming year. And we are not having to purchase materials that we had to purchase this year for the initial implementation.
Mrs. McCullough?
Well, you were up there, Mr. Carson. So that piece in there about the physical fitness piece that didn't go over so well, and we're not going to be having this next year, is that just because that's what they were doing up in Plattville and we were just replicating their curriculum? So we're really adjusting it?
So the reason for that configuration is to mirror a college course, which meets every other day as opposed to every day, in incorporating something that would logically fit with the curriculum. And so the change this year again is to make it more of a college preparedness, study skills, test preparation skills, financial literacy when it comes to paying for college, incorporating all those skills. So it will meet five days consecutively as opposed to an AB type of approach. Sure thing.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the approval of the engineering services for the tennis court at two high schools and a land acquisition and development adjacent to Lincoln Middle School.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Any questions or discussion on item 9B? I don't have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 9B.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough? Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay. I'll now take a motion and a second for the approval of 9C, which is the Certified Speech and Language Pathologist.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Is this to cover hours that are still old, or is this to fill a vacant position?
Mrs. Cyrus?
This is an extension of a contract that, of an employee that came forward previously. It's to cover extended school year services through the summer and early childhood evaluations that are required by the district to be provided for any of the children that are two and a half turning three over the summer months.
It says it's at a rate of $75 an hour for up to seven, oh, up to seven and a half hours per day. Okay.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 9C.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of 10A, which is the Freedom of Information Log.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Just a request to receive, the requests that were granted, electronic copies. I think everything was sent out electronically.
Ms. Fromm, you want to answer that question?
We have actually on board docs a FOIA library of all the requests that have been sent. And it's by date.
For all the electronic ones?
All the electronic ones.
I'm sorry.
On board docs.
So is the material there as well?
Yes.
That you've granted the request? So whatever you've sent to them, I can find on board docs?
Everything's out there, under Library. And then it's Freedom of Information Act folder. And it's by date.
The coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 10A, the FOIA log.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following items: Resolution to remedy, the appointment of James Robinett as 12-monthed principal at Barber Language Academy, the approval of the contract for Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. as Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. Term of the contract is four years with a salary of $126,330,000 beginning July 1st of 2015. The approval of the contract for Dr. Daniel Weisman as Chief Quality and Process Improvement Officer. And also the term of the contract is four years with a salary of $135,464.40 beginning July 1st, 2015. The HR organizational report and professional development report. And the following closed session consent items for student discipline, in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The following student, NRB-13, is expelled for their first semester of the 2015-16 school year. The expulsions for NRG-14, CCB-19, and GTJB-20 are held in abeyance, continued upon a conditional probation agreement for the entire 2014-15 school year, being executed on or before the next board meeting. That's supposed to be 2015-16 school years? That's correct. Let me correct that and say 2015-16 school year for those CPAs. The following students, LN-15 and TSJ-17, are expelled for the first two trimesters of the 2015-16 school year. The suspensions are upheld for JJJ-21 and JDL-22. And the following students have been granted a conditional probation agreement, TAG-1, JDK-2, ECA-3, ZMH-4, RV-5, MFS-6, TAS-7, and NSG-8. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Second by Ms. Powers. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mrs. Powers?
11C.
11C. Ms. Jackson?
11D.
D, okay. Okay. The coordinator then call the roll on the items not pulled.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of item 11C, which is the contract for Mr. Dotson, Chief Communications and Communication, Community Engagement Officer.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. No discussion, correct? All right, seeing none. No questions, I will have the coordinator call the roll.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two noes.
I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of the contract for Dr. Daniel Weisman, item 11D.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Any questions or discussions on the contract? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 11D.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you. I would like to defer my time to Ms. Talbert Scott to provide some additional budget follow-up this evening.
Good evening, everybody. Before I get started with the document that's included with your, within the board docs, I would like to respond to some questions that was asked by our board member, Mrs. McCullough, today. And so, my apologies for not getting that out to you in a more timely manner of presenting it to you at this moment. This has actually to do with a board item that's up and coming later, which is how we are requesting to have the board approve us to participate in a purchasing consortium, PEPPM Technology Bidding and Purchasing Program. And Ms. McCullough asked some questions. Her first question is, what are we ordering? And the response is, well, it has to do with what are we ordering in terms of furniture, chairs, and desks? And why does it need to be here by the start of the school? And what's the necessity for suspending the rules today? Response, none of this furniture needs to be here for the start of the school next year, per se. However, it is important to make incremental progress each year on the furniture refresh. The reason that we are requesting the rules to be suspended is so that the district can place the order in time to have the furniture for the start of the next school year. The capital projects team identified three equal classroom furniture manufacturers and obtained quotes through the various purchasing consortiums. The apparent low response in terms of a quote unfortunately was from the PEPPM Consortium, which the board has not adopted. Staff could have moved forward and ordered from a previously adopted consortium to have the furniture in time. However, it would have added an additional $41,000 to the cost of the order. And so by the facilities capital team doing extra due diligence to identify equivalent manufacturers, as well as obtaining quotes from various consortiums, there actually would be saving the district about 8% on this order. The schools that will be receiving the furniture are Auburn, Guilford, and Jefferson High Schools. The total cost of the furniture is $481,654. And this includes, at Auburn, 33 general classrooms of student desks and chairs. Auburn, nine science classrooms of student desks and chairs. Guilford, 42 general classrooms and 10 science classrooms of student desks and chairs. And Jefferson, 39 general classrooms of student desks and chairs. This purchase would be paid out of our capital fund 60 plan that is included in the 2016 budget that's being recommended. The next question was, if we do not receive the furniture, can we continue to use the current furniture? The response is yes. And then the final question in regards to this is if we send furniture out to bid, will the consortium bid on it? And our response is, the consortium has already administered a nationwide bid of the furniture, and they have already awarded multi-year contracts. The district can however choose to issue a bid, and then the individual manufacturers, if they so choose, can just respond to the bid. Okay, to move forward with our follow-up, so this evening, I would really just like to present some follow-up information of some questions that had been asked in previous board meetings in reference to the budget. And so, just going through the board doc, there was a question last time about to explain the $75,000 increase in Fund 10 travel expenditures budget. And after further review, it's actually a few different changes. One of them actually has to do with the travel budget for a school, where for whatever reason, they had an additional $40,000 in their budget. How they would have loved to have kept that $40,000, but that is an error. So that error has been corrected. Overall, the school-based travel budgets actually increased by about $75,000. Administration travel budgets decreased by about $41,000. So once we take into account the error that has been corrected, the net change in travel budgets is $34,000. The next question that was presented was to, for us to explain how the additional $904,000 of CPPRT funds are being budgeted. So the response to that is five school buses for $425,000, two FTEs for teaching positions for par consulting. This includes salary and benefits of $221,000. Here, I have listed that there is $101,000 for a continuous improvement manager position. However, that's actually being funded with a different stream of revenue. And so then, the additional funds, with the unknown certainty in terms of enrollment and how some things may be shuffled around in terms of teaching FTE positions, we would like to actually have a contingency within our budget to account for that in the event that we have to add FTEs to accommodate the academic, the need for additional teaching positions. The next question is in response to the facilities and capital team payroll and time allocation. So what we're proposing, Todd and his team actually did a time study to look at the staff that have been hired since the capital plan has been underway. And for those staff were FY '16, the salary and benefits are about $386,000. And there was a study done to allocate between Fund 20, which is our operations and maintenance fund, our Fund 60, which is our capital fund, and then Fund 90, which is the life safety fund. And so the recommendation there is as follows. Fund 20 would actually only keep about $36,000, $35,679. Fund 60 would get the bulk of it at $340,020. And Fund 90 would receive or have an allocation of $76,343. And so, by freeing up these funds, the plan was to actually keep those funds in Fund 20 and use those towards deferred maintenance projects. That is what I believe to be all of the outstanding questions that I have or that we've received at this time. So I'm open to additional questions or requests.
Mr. Connor, I think you had your line in first.
Under number three, help me understand the math on this. It says allocated as follow, but each fund has a positive number, and that adds up to more than 385. So is one of those either offset or the total is off?
No.
452042.
I think it's just missing on there. The total is 452. The 385 is salary, and the benefits wasn't included at of $66,000. So the 452 of the total is correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCullough, was that the same question you had?
Well, it was one of my two questions.
Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned on the CPPRT, the 101, the continuous improvement manager position would be shifted to a difference, where is that going?
So, that has...
Who's going, where's that going to be paid for?
I can actually address that one. That was presented in the organizational report as an optional position for the board to consider in the cover sheet that I presented.
Oh, I thought this was different than what you presented.
No, no, that's the, that's the continuous. That was presented on the...
So basically, I'm seeing here that we have, whether or not we have that position, there's $100,000 there, there's $156,000 left over that we could use for additional FTEs if we need it. And there is, how much left? The 340 that we're putting over. So, we're looking at 340. If we leave the continuous improvement manager position, which I understand to be an important part of this administration's desire moving us forward, so leaving that off, if we have the 340 plus the 156, where we are... I thought it says remaining 156 will be held in contention.
Plus the 101, because that's covered.
Oh, okay. So 256. Well, that's five more buses. Or deferred maintenance. Do we already have money in our budget for next year for deferred maintenance?
Yes.
And so this is additional deferred maintenance?
Correct.
And I do understand... And I do understand, Mr. Connor, that we have IT that we're, but we haven't totally identified where that's going. And tonight we are identifying a different need. So that was part of the reason for delaying the vote was to see what kind of money we had. And I would extend an apology because these numbers were in here. I had expected them to be sent to us. I had not dug down deep enough for to have there for the earlier conversation. So my apologies for that. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins, did you have your way down?
Yeah, so then the other question I guess I've got, I mean, this is sort of a question for the board. So I know that we've budgeted in this fiscal year '16 budget $300,000 for new furniture. And I think you touched on some of the answers to your questions to or to Mrs. McCullough's questions. You know, if we don't, if we don't spend the money on the furniture, we'll have furniture. It just won't be new furniture. So the question I think for the board is, do we need furniture more than we need buses?
Different funds. She said all, did I hear you right when you said all $481,000 for this furniture is coming out of 60?
Yes, but we do have $300,000 in our operating funds to contribute or budget for furniture.
Okay, so that's initially, it was going to be what, 1.3 million or something? And we reduced it to 300,000. And so this 400,000 that you're looking for with this consortium total for those three schools is in addition to that 300,000?
That's, help me out, Todd. That's part of the $4 million that's budgeted in the capital plan for furniture.
Okay, I'll ask you again. The $481,654 that you said was for furniture with this group, you said was all coming out of Fund 60. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is there also an additional $300,000 that you're planning to purchase furniture for that is not for these schools? It's for something else or what?
Correct.
Ms. McCullough, just to clarify that, we have 1.3 million dollars as a as a goal. When we talked about, when we built our facility plan, it's actually a $279 million facilities plan. Built into that assumption was $13 million in additional furniture investment over a 10-year period. There was a $16 million deferred maintenance commitment. So that adds up to an additional $29 million. And so one of the, so what Mr. Schmidt and has recommended and what Mrs. Talbot Scott has recommended is that we utilize the additional money in Fund 20 to move some of that down. That 16 million original deferred maintenance is now down to 13 million. We're hoping to make a dent on that. We also did not, we also, when we presented the budget, in addition to busing, presented a series of administrative priorities in terms of things that we would restore. Busing was part of that and we've made some efforts in busing, but we are also trying to address deferred maintenance, investing in furniture and proper investment in IT. There are, it is not just busing that we were, that we were underinvesting in in order to close a $17 million budget deficit. And so that is one of the reasons why we did not put all of this money back into, back to busing as much as we know there is also a need with busing. We're very open to the fact that if the board's direction is put all of it into busing, then that's something that that we can do. That is not our administrative recommendation, however.
Mr. Rollins?
Okay, so if I understand correctly, you've got 300,000 in furniture that if we made that decision, could be pivoted towards buses. And you've got, I'm not sure what the total number was, 340,000 plus another, you were having a conversation down there, there wasn't really following, 256.
221 plus 101.
So that gets you up to 188,96,000. You know, on the, on the furniture, you know, to me, this is just my opinion. My opinion is that we need the buses more than the furniture. The buses, if we push the buses down the road, it's going to increase our maintenance costs. The buses generate revenue from the state and the furniture, it's not going to increase our costs down the road if we don't get the furniture this year. And if we buy furniture, that's not going to generate revenue from the state. So if things are really this tight, if things are so tight that we're talking about whether or not we can buy our buses, I think the buses are more important. I'll just, I'll just put it out there. And if we've now pivoted these salaries, which were in the operations budget, and we've now put them, decided they more appropriately belong in the capital plan, that frees up another, I guess, $596,000 that we could also use to buy buses. I'm, you know, the business about kicking the buses off, just like the IT, I will say, I'm concerned about the IT too. The buses are easier to talk about, particularly since they generate revenue from the state and payback from the state, at least under the current rules. But this is, this is in a, in a capsule, this is what the state of Illinois has been doing for the past 10 or 15 or 20 years, which is kicking the can down the road, not spending the money that they need to spend when they need to spend it and kicking the can down the road. And so at some point, you know, that's going to come back and bite us. And that is what I'm concerned about.
Ms. Jackson, did you have a question or comment?
It's not about the buses. So if there are more conversation about the buses, I'll let that continue.
Okay. Ms. Powers?
I guess the only, as I'm listening to Mrs. McCullough do her math and kind of where we're at, I'm a little hesitant to redirect the 156,000 at this point in time, only because those could be student-facing resources, those could be teachers. And if we need them, we need them. So while I'm completely comfortable in taking the 340,000 out of Fund 60, the additional 300,000 for furniture, plus the current 425,000 that's allocated, it at least gets us closer to our goal. I just am a little bit concerned about completely robbing all the coffers, especially when there are dollars that could potentially impact students, so.
Plus the 101?
Um, I'm not sure about the 101. I, I'm not sure about the 101. I know that I feel strongly about the 156.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
And just to, and I'm not advocating everything moving over. I think board members need to think about it because we will vote on that at the end of the meeting because we tabled that about how much we want to spend on buses. But just so you have an idea of, you know, what's available there for that conversation, I don't think that we need to finish that now. We're not voting on a budget right now. And so we can give the administration direction as to what our, by our vote at that point in time. And somebody will have to make a motion as to how much they want to spend toward buses when we get there.
Mr. Connor?
Is Mr. Wilson still here?
Yep, he's hiding back there.
Ah, there he is, hiding.
He's not hiding.
So Mr. Wilson, if we change from 10 buses arbitrarily to 15 or some other number, what are the mechanics of us purchasing that? Can we add on to the current bid we have or do we have to rebid?
The current bid is for 25 buses. We can go down from that number or we could go up from that number.
Okay.
But that was what it was bid at and they gave us the price set for that.
Okay, so the long and the short of it is if we do something tonight, we can go off that bid. So there's no impact if we were to say we want another five buses or whatever.
That is correct. There is no impact.
Well, but yes, whether we want to do the money part or not. So I think, I didn't say this enough at Ops, and I'll say it here again, is I think the only part that bothers me is I've been listening to this conversation for months. And I think the part that I think bothers me is that if we've got a regular plan for bus replacement, it seems like that's been a moving target, just, and it could be because I wasn't paying full attention. But I think it's really important to understand on the planning on some of these, I guess when, and just speaking for me, when I see some of these, some of the options, sometimes we don't have a full context. And I think what I'd highly recommend is that we do, if we've got a target number that we understand probably more clearly and maybe it's buried in there, and I apologize if it is and I didn't realize it. But one thing I will say is that I think making that clear and the impact over, say, three, five years would be very important, especially on this because I'll just speak for myself and feel that, I hear the board members, I think buses are important, never denied it. I think my only issue was taking from, as Mrs. Powers said, potentially student-facing positions and other alternatives. And the way I felt is that when this was presented, I thought the administration made a good faith effort to try to balance the books and make sure that we had an appropriate amount of money set aside for buses. This happened to be on our original list and I think that's now, what, six weeks old or maybe it's two months old. So I just want to say that this kind of thing, and I understand absolutely the point that's been made, is I'd like to be clear earlier on so that we understand the impact of this because what I'm going to say is I feel in some ways, it's kind of the 11th hour and I think some of these impacts are now only really getting clear. So that's not really a criticism. I'm sure it's all of us working together on this, but I'm just going to say, as long, my challenge to the administration is if the board says, hey, we'll take and I'll make an arbitrary number of 800,000 or something like that, if you tell us that that's not going to impact student-facing services and so forth, I'm absolutely okay with it. But I'm just going to say, if we get into more deeper budget discussions and we find out there are other cuts, that's when I know I'll personally be unhappy on that one.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Rollins?
This is not a comment about buses, only indirectly. I actually won't be here when we vote on the budget. So if we move a little bit money over to buses, you know, I would vote for this budget. I'm not happy with it. I do think we're kicking it down the road, kicking the can down the road. The IT budget is not sustainable. We can't do that multi-year. And I think, I know there's a hope on the part of the administration that the state is going to bail us out and I'm less optimistic than they are. So I think we're going to be having some difficult conversations next year. And I, I hope that the board gets involved in those conversations. I don't think we can wait until April. It seems like I had a similar conversation last year. I don't think we can wait until April to start talking about the budget involving and involving the board. Unless manna starts falling from heaven this summer, I think we're going to have to have a more robust budget process that involves the board earlier on because I think we're going to, there's a real chance that we're going to be making some really unpleasant decisions over the next fiscal year. And I hope that's not true. I hope the manna falls from heaven, but I think we need to start planning for contingencies.
Ms. Jackson?
So I do have a couple of questions and I'm looking at some PowerPoint presentations. So, and I'm not sure what date this is from, but it talks about the proposed budget highlights. Under operations and facilities, it talks about the administration building and then escalator removal and rework second floor, but there are no dollars attached to that. Everything else has dollars. May you speak to that, please?
Yep, just give me a moment to look up that information. We have budgeted within our operations and maintenance fund for this building, Fund 24, $175,000 for the removal and services related to the escalator for the second floor.
She asked if that included the rework on the second floor.
The 175,000.
No, that was just for any work that we have to potentially do with the bank vacating the second floor. We have another $100,000 in there for any potential rework that we would have to do on the second floor.
So it's 175 for the removal of the escalator and any services with that and then 100,000 to rework the second floor?
Yes.
That's in the budget?
Yes, that's in the Fund 24 budget.
There is. I didn't know if she was looking for something else.
Go ahead.
So I have a question on our GSA. What is, for this budget, what is the proration based on? Is it 89%?
Yes, 89%.
Is there a decrease that's coming down, 2%? No? No, there is a 2% decrease.
There has been talks of decreases. There's been talks of increases. But there's nothing at this point that is solid that we can hang our hat on in terms of adjusting our budget down to reflect a 2% increase in proration.
When will we know if that 2% will happen?
We likely won't know until the state actually approves a budget because at that point, I mean, they can make changes.
And that's when?
They have to have it approved by the end of September, September 30th.
So, so we plan for if that happens at 2%, right?
Well, if something like that were to happen, I would assume that we would do a plan similar as to what we did this year in terms of a budget reduction plan. So we would look for things that we would freeze in terms of purchases and, you know, those types of things like we did earlier this year in trying to attempt to balance our 2015 budget.
That is correct. That's exactly what we would do.
In addition to what we've already done. And then the categorical A payments, how many did we receive? Did we receive three or four?
We've received three and we are expected to receive the fourth with the exception of the 700 and something thousand that the state has taken away for this year.
And our budget assumptions for '15, '16 are based on receiving four, right?
Correct.
When does the fourth one need to be received before it can be part of, I guess, counted for the budget year that we're in? Have we passed that time?
With, no, it has to actually be received within the first 60 days of the next fiscal year. So by around the end of August.
You said we received three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, I'm not sure that I've received or the administration's really received direction because at the next meeting, we will be presenting the final budget. So at this point, I'm not, I'm not sure that we have clear direction in terms of if there are any changes or any questions.
We're about to get it on the busing.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. McCullough, you can proceed with the education committee report.
Education committee met in this room on Tuesday, June 1st. That was last week. And we had reports from a few administrators. One was early childhood. Ms. Nelson talked to us a little bit about where we're at with the program right now, total enrollment of 2,891 students. All the PowerPoint presentations that were, that were given regarding each of these reports is available on board docs. If you go to the library, education committee, and then put that date in, you can pull up any of those reports. Talked a little bit about the funding for the early childhood. We have a state grant. We are underfunded 1.9%, which is about $150,000, which they have been able to capture and reduce purchase of supplies in some other areas. That reduction, that 1.5 or 9% is not supposed to continue into next year's. The, the news about the full day four-year-old program, the federal grant that we received for that was, I believe, was that in the paper anyways? It was, wasn't it? So a lot of this information you're going to hear has already been in the media. It will be at three locations, Dennis Early Childhood, Summerdale and Circles of Learning will each have 40 seats for students. And it's a pretty severe group of students in terms of poverty level. It's like 200% below the national poverty level is, is the cutoff for being there. We look, by having that, by having that federal program, we're going to be able to reduce the amount of money that the district- the amount of money that the district puts into early childhood from 12% this year to 7% next year, because 4% will be captured by that program. So the next report we had was from Dr. Wiestman on Park, that I also was in the newspaper, and that's the park testing. And next year's going to be shorter. Instead of two sessions, it'll be one session. It'll be 90 minutes less. There'll be a window of opportunity to test, which is 30 days. So we didn't have a large group using the electronic testing that we were going to go to this year, but those that did were supported by our IT department. We just don't have the hardware, basically, to do it across the district. There was conversation about whether or not we want to participate, but because so many of our grants are tied to the park testing, there's really no, there's really no conversation. We need to continue with that. So the next was about the school improvement planning. Mr. Hickman spoke to what's being done in the district and some of the positives, as well as the challenges that their meeting. What was interesting in these numbers and all the data, again, is on Board Docs with the presentations. The use of the data to focus decision and improvement, when asked, 80 to 89% had a positive response. And the use of school-wide collaboration for this process, 81 to 84% positive. So there's a lot of, a lot of good feeling and work with the union, with the REA as part of this, the goal is 2016, 17, is that correct, Mr. Hickman, to have all the schools trained? So the final report we had was from Mr. Carson about the high school academies, and talked about some of the improvements that are being put into place. One is a senior capstone project. It's already an ongoing pilot at Auburn and Roosevelt, and hopefully they'll be implementing a district-wide pilot in 2016, 2017. There's another change called Project Lead the Way, which is a lot of engineering courses, a ninth-grade exploring engineering, a 10th-grade engineering design, 11th-grade principle of engineering, and then it breaks off into computer science, civil, environmental, and computer integrated for the 11th-grade year. But then the senior year, there will be a capstone project for that engineering. The third change to the, the third major change to the academies in the health, health science course curriculum, and what they've done is changed it to have 10th grade now be an introduction to health occupation, and 11th grade will be medical terminology, because it's been determined that that's an important component for our students moving forward. They talked about, he, Mr. Carson talked about the sophomore site visits, and I thought this was just a really great piece of information, that 100% of the teachers said the visits were worthwhile, and 97% of the students thought they were worthwhile. Our industry experts gave us 176.5 hours, which the value contributed to the district is $10,000 in their time. The students actually, 93 said they felt better informed about the careers in their pathway, and 80% saw a connection between their courses and their visit. And as I already said, 93% thought it was a worthwhile experience. And I just think that's really important, because the community is investing in us, and our students are understanding more how, what they're learning is associated with the careers that they may, that they may focus on in their future. There was also a conversation about the college and career readiness benchmarks. I think it's really great if anybody wants to look that up, because they start in kindergarten and go all the way, they're listed all the way through grade 12. The last conversation was about summer professional development and how much is there and how difficult it is to get teachers, you know, on board and available and participating. And Ms. Powers isn't here right now, but she thought it would be really great if there was a competition among the schools, just like there is with the ACT prep course, with, because the kids are really out there trying to make their school have the most participation. And she said, maybe if we had a competition between teachers for who attended more of the professional development, it would be a positive competition. Those were the reports that we had. We still have an opportunity, if anybody wants, to apply for Ed Committee. We won't be actually closing those until the next board meeting. And our next education committee meeting is the third Monday in, or, excuse me, the third Tuesday in July in this room. That ends my report.
Mr. Rollins, Operations Committee.
Operations Committee had a very short meeting here in this room on June 2nd at 5:30 PM. We talked about the engineering services contract, which the board already approved as part of the consent agenda. One thing I'll add that I meant to say during the discussion and forgot to, part of that contract is for the engineering work for redoing the tennis courts at Auburn and Guilford. Not all of those are our courts. Some of them will be the Park District's courts. We're doing, taking the lead on this contract, and the Park District will reimburse us on a proportional basis for their work pursuant to our intergovernmental agreement that we approved, I think, last fall. We got an update on the status of the BMO Harris Bank lease. The bank has renewed its lease for this building for the first floor for three years, but is not interested in renewing for the second floor, so we'll be taking that over, and the administration's looking at that space and deciding how best to use it. We talked about the bus purchase, which I won't talk about anymore. And then, since we had a little extra time, Mr. Schmidt gave us a little bit of an update on the facilities plan, told us where some of the bids were coming in. One of the things that he did mention is that we're having trouble getting really a large number of bids on the painting projects that we're bidding out there. And I think he said that on the last one, we only got one bid. And we talked a little bit about some of the reasons for that. I know that, that we or our project manager has been sort of beating the bushes, trying to find contractors to bid. One of the committee members said that he'd try to help us out. One of the ideas that Mr. Schmidt is considering, I think, is to just hire our own painting crew, and then hopefully, given the discussion that we've had about the other things, since that's clearly just replacing work that would be done in their facilities plan, we'd just allocate that, those, those costs to the facilities plan if we did that. And that was it.
Okay. And your next meeting is?
Over the first Tuesday of the month is in July. Actually, there was a discussion at the end of the meeting about whether we really needed to meet in July. And I think Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Lumpkin were going to look at whether or not that's really necessary. So just let us know.
Okay. Dr. Herner, the Facilities Plan Oversight Committee report.
Has not met, and will meet on July 16th.
June 16th.
Oh, I'm sorry. June 16th.
Yeah, okay.
6:00 PM.
All right.
In this room, in the board meeting room, in the boardroom. Thank you.
Okay, on the 16th, very good. So our first, we'll now move on to the action items for tonight's meeting. Our first action item is the consulting agreement with the Comprehensive Finance Services. Is there a motion and a second to approve this agreement?
So moved.
Second. By Mr. Rollins, second by Mr. Connor. Any discussion or questions? It is the agreement for the Comprehensive Finance Services, okay? Any questions or discussion? Now I have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the action item 16A.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Our next action item is the approval of the Auburn sidewalk easement. That was presented by Mr. Schmidt. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the Auburn sidewalk easement.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Okay. So now we're on to new business, and administration has requested the board to suspend the rules to consider the resolution approving the participation in the P E P P M Technology Bidding and Purchasing Program that Ms. Talbert Scott has already talked about. So is there a motion and a second to suspend the rules?
So reluctantly moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Ms. McCullough. Questions or discussion on that motion? There is none.
You can.
Okay. Not debatable. All right, so we call, have the coordinator call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner? Mr. Connor? Mrs. Powers? Mr. Rollins?
No.
The motion fails by vote of 4 to 2.
Okay. So that item will have to come back to our next board meeting, correct? Now we have to go back and add the bus discussion, or the bus.
Yes. Do you want that conversation?
All right, we'll do that. This is, who's going to be doing that?
We lost Ms. Talbert Scott. I don't know where.
Oh, there she is. Do you want to make your presentation? This is on the technology bidding proposal.
Furniture.
Furniture. Yeah, the, yeah. The consortium, the, yeah.
The group buying agreement, or whatever it is, yeah.
So we are presenting to you all tonight for your consideration for us to be able to enter into an agreement to purchase from this purchasing consortium. We did engage attorney Tom Bischel, as we have with any other consortium, so he did review their purchasing, excuse me, rules, regulations to ensure that they are in compliance with what our policy, our district policy says, and he did find that they were in compliance. And actually, he's the one who, you know, drafted the resolution. This purchasing consortium has a plethora, a number of vendors that the district could possibly use for not only furniture, but technology use as well. As you are well aware of, per our earlier discussion, we were looking to use this consortium to purchase furniture for the schools funded from the capital fund, and we were wanting to use them, because they would be about $41,000 cheaper for equivalent-type brand, I don't want to say brand, but equivalent furniture in terms of when the capital or facilities team went out and obtained multiple quotes for the furniture. Are there any further questions?
Okay, this will come up then for a vote at our next board meeting, which is two weeks. So now, I think we can move on to the news.
Can I go, can I, I'm sorry, can I go back? Because I actually was reading through this, and I don't understand something in the executive summary. It says the lowest quote received for this purchase is approximately $50,000 less than the next lowest quote. What does that mean exactly?
That is rounding up. So it's actually when, when we got the actual figures and comparisons, it's actually the $41,000. So for the purchasing consortium, in the quotes, the capital team actually contacted three different vendors that have been awarded contracts through different purchasing consortiums for the furniture. And when they received the quotes back, the one that has the contract with P E P P M is $41,000 less than the same or equivalent furniture from the other two purchasing consortiums that have the same type of furniture, but just different vendors.
But you didn't actually go out and just ask people to quote on the furniture?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, we contacted each of those purchasing consortiums that have.
No, the vendors, people who sell furniture, not consortiums, companies who sell furniture.
Right. The companies that sell the furniture are awarded the bid contracts through the consortium. So to give you, to give you an example, I'm going to use Steelcase. Steelcase is a manufacturer that has been awarded a furniture contract through P E P P P M, or whatever purchasing consortium. So the consortium is just the organization.
I understand that. So did anybody go to Steelcase and say, what, what will you quote us for this furniture?
Yes, we went to three different vendors that were awarded contracts, yes.
And are the, this is what I'm trying to figure out. Are the quotes that they gave you higher than what's on the purchasing schedules?
So we see, the pricing that we get is what they, so just like when we do a bid, we get unit pricing, the same thing is with theirs. So we would ask them, okay, this is the kind of furniture that we want, because we can, we see, I mean, we see all of the results of their bids. We see exactly what types of furniture. A lot of them have a lot of big catalogs. And so the specifications that we would say, okay, we need five chairs that do this, that, and the other, we would send that out to vendors who have been awarded bids under purchasing consortiums. And we would ask them, what, what is the, can you please solidify for us what the pricing is for these items?
What I'm trying to figure out is why we're not just going out for bids for furniture ourselves. And what's, why would we not just go out for bid for furniture?
Well, the reason why we would use a purchasing consortium would be the fact that that's a national buying power. So, for example, when they advertise their bids, they don't advertise their bids local, they advertise them nationally. So the thought would be that the more people that participate in the consortium and purchase through the consortium, the pricing would go lower. And so that's why we actually look for those types of things via a purchasing consortium. So we can purchase just about anything through a purchasing consortium. Now, we don't do that, but that is an option. That's how big the purchasing consortium world is. So there could be another government in Texas that is going, another, let's say, a large school district, is going to issue a bid for copiers. Well, it wouldn't be a bid. They'd issue RFP for copiers. And the pricing that they obtain for that, because those companies know that this is on a national level, not just a school district level, that their pricing is more competitive than what it would be if Rockford School District itself were to just issue the bid.
And have we actually seen that in practice? Have we, can you point to situations where we've gone out for bid and it's turned out that it's been lower on a purchasing consortium?
Yes. Uh huh. So there have been examples when, and it's more on the supplies. So for some of our school specialty supplies and our, I don't know if you remember last year, some of our healthcare and medical supplies, where we actually did go out for bid, and the board asked, why didn't we go through a purchasing consortium? So we actually did compare the pricing, and in that instance, it was actually lower. And not, not in all instances across the board, but in a number of instances through the consortium, the various supplies that we purchased were actually lower. So.
Okay. So, I'm not sure who's next, but.
So, let's, let's do some basic math. If we wanted 200 chairs, and we went direct to Steelcase or whomever, presumably it would be $100 a chair or whatever, but because we're buying 100 rather than 100,000, or whatever the number is through the consortium, then they're going to say, oh, we'll give you 10, 20%. So that the competition is between the consortiums, who have huge amounts, and we want to take advantage of it. So if we go out, we are essentially getting roughly the equivalent of wholesale numbers, because now we're adding our volume to 1,000 other schools, or whatever the numbers are. Is that the concept?
Correct.
Okay. And we know, and so the point is that, you know, we're essentially taking advantage of very large numbers that are wholesale. There's probably only three of these folks, and then they compete amongst each other for the percentage they get as a fee, or whatever the deal is, when we go out there. So the net for us as a district is always because we have high numbers, we go to consortiums that have even higher numbers, and that drives our cost down.
Correct.
Is that the point?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. McCullough?
So if, if I heard you correctly, you said that when we put
So, if, if I heard you correctly, you said that when we put something out for bid, we give the specs, we don't say it has to be Steelcase.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And so, but this consortium would work with large vendors, and, and do we go to them and say, give them specs, or do we say we want Steelcase?
We give them specs. So, for example, with this furniture, there was not a brand-name furniture that was given to us, that's, in essence, why the one that we were looking at purchasing was actually lower, because we didn't just say, okay, we want Steelcase, et cetera. We say, we, we're very generic.
That's good. So, Ms. Holdley, I have a question. So, if we do put our furniture out for bid, and one of the bids we would get would be from the consortium, no. So, we can't go out to bid, and then they could be one of the bids and be the lowest bidder? If you're with the consortium, you have to buy it from the consortium if you ask them to give you a number. Do you understand my question?
I understand your question, but.
I don't understand the legality of it.
But that's, Mr. Connor is correct when he's saying no.
I mean, I get there, but why not?
Because the, the point is, you do something, it's like subscribing to something. You know, i- if you go out and you subscribe to Dish Network or to DirecTV, you buy into their services, you don't say, oh, I'm going to bid, you know, every time I want to watch a new show, you subscribe to something, it presumably gives you lower numbers, and it controls quality, you know, and it coordinates, because there may be people you don't know of, and it's their job, they do it for a living, it's like our brokers, we do for the, that we just approved for our healthcare. That's what they do for a living, they promise to save us money, we subscribe to them, so it's not like a general bid in that way.
Okay, and you're wrong now.
Okay?
Well, I didn't like the word presumably, so go ahead.
All right, so what happens is, we can go through a consortium.
Right.
Or we can go out for bid, they're not mutually exclusive. It doesn't mean the consortium will bid on it, it means that the vendors that have participated in the consortium can still bid on whatever we put out. So, when you're talking about Steelcase, for example, they could either choose to submit an individual bid if, if we put it out for bid, or if they chose not to, we may get other vendors, too, I'm not sure what that would be, but the consortium is already pre-bid items, and so, presumably, they're, they have good prices. I think it all depends, really, though, on what you're purchasing and how good of a bid that.
But, but you think like a lawyer, and I think like a finance guy, so that's why, I wasn't saying legally, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying from a common sense standpoint, if you're paying for a subscription, you don't, I mean, you want to pick the best.
So, my, this was my question was, and you just said they're not mutually exclusive, so if we put something out for a bid, and we also have a quote from the consortium, and the consortium's quote is higher.
Why would it be higher? That's the point.
Well.
That assumption, look, think volume, if I buy 100,000 items.
I understand that that's the purpose. I totally get that that's the purpose.
Then I don't get the question. I'm sorry. I don't get the question.
Well, then it should prove to us that it was less, because their bid should come back less, correct?
You would think if you get volume pricing, you're going to get lower prices. In most cases, in most cases. Mr. Rollins?
Well, that's true, I think the risk is that when we get on these schedules, or we start only looking at the schedules, that you define your needs based on what's on the schedule, rather than what your actual needs are. And that's where I think you could end up running into some problems. I will say, because Dr. Herner and I just had this conversation, it's my understanding that when you go out for bids, you can just reject all bids, so, I mean, if we are participating in these consortiums, I would hope that we would at least occasionally go out and, and do bids, just to check the market, and if the, it turns out that all of the bids are higher than what you can buy off of a schedule that, for a consortium that we're participating in, I think all of our bid documents have language saying we can reject all bids, and then you can turn around and buy off of the, off of the schedule then. But I am a little concerned that the schedules become the easy button, and that we don't really define, we don't do the hard work to define our functional specifications in a way that will actually, at the end of the day, end up getting, getting us our best price.
And I, we are actually working on developing criteria in the process, because this came up previously when we brought forward a purchasing consortium the last time, in terms of what would the procedures be, or the process of, when would we actually go out to bid, or use an RFP, or some type of a solicitation, versus going to a consortium. And so, we are working on what that process would look like, and then present that to the operations committee, so that we, as the administration, also have a clear understanding in terms of what the board expects. Do you want us to go out to bid? Or, when will it, based on what we recommend, when will it be acceptable to actually use a purchasing consortium? Because as I mentioned, there are at least eight or nine of them that we could use just that, but even within them, they have hundreds of vendors that have approved contracts. Not trying to say we use those, but I think that the district really just needs to understand or finalize what, how we're going to use the purchasing consortiums, and what the, the wishes of the board are in terms of that.
Mrs. Powers, you had another question?
The only thing I wanted to add is that, you know, as we start to get more and more teacher feedback and input at the building level for furniture, which is what we are planning, I do like the idea of being able to have a broader menu. And if the consortium gives us that, because things at East need to be different than they are at Auburn, or what have you, and certainly, once you get from secondary into elementary, but I, I think that we do need to occasionally do the spot checking to make sure, I mean, it's just good practice, it's just good audit, to make sure that we are, in fact, getting competitive prices. So, I think, you know, what I heard earlier is that there is not necessarily an urgency from a timing standpoint, and that's part of why I think the suspension of the rules failed. Can you just confirm for me that there is not necessarily a timing issue?
Timing for having this approved at the next board meeting?
So, now, we're not, I think what the proposal said is, there's no urgency in the sense that we can't, there's not a situation where we can't buy the furniture. What I thought I heard was, we now will not have it for the start of the school year. I know, just personally, for example, the Auburn lab investment is a huge deal to the faculty at Auburn, and now that will not be in place, now they will not have improved science labs to start the year. That came about, a really robust dialogue that I had with the faculty, that our team went out and had with the faculty, it was, it was going to be a significant improvement, it was a big shot in the arm in terms of morale, and the team really hustled to try to put this proposal in place to make sure Auburn had science labs. Now, they won't have them to start the year, maybe they'll have them a month into the year. And that's, that was why we made that recommendation.
So, I guess if we could just, I, for whatever reason, and I brought it up before, I'm going to bring it up again, if we cannot discuss why we are asking for suspension of the rules, then I think it, it just needs to be crystal clear, because that point that you just made about Auburn and their labs is nowhere reflected in the information for me to make an informed decision. So, I, again, challenge why we cannot have conversation prior to suspension of the rules vote.
That's Robert's Rules of Order, but if you want to change your board policy to eliminate that requirement, you can.
So, I just asked the board to think about it, because I would like full disclosure as to why we are being expected. Either that, or it needs to be flagged beyond the double asterix, a narrative, bullet points, whatever, but you have an uninformed board that, member, I'll speak for myself, that voted tonight.
And I, Mrs. Talbert Scott did say that tonight, during my superintendent's comments, I asked her to address that for that very reason, Mrs. Powers, and I suppose we could have been more clear on that, and. So, so we can still reconfigure the labs, they just won't have the proper desks.
Ms. McCullough, did you have a question?
Oh, I did. Um, so I'm still understanding consortiums, and according to the administrative report and the contract, there's no fee for us to participate, and so, they make their money, do they get a percentage of, I, I mean, how, so obviously, they're a business. Is that common for us to not have to pay into consortiums?
Correct.
So, all of them are free of charge?
Yes.
And they just make their money based on their vendors?
Yes, and a lot of them actually are organizations, so they're not just a consortium, that's something that they do in addition to being a not-for-profit organization, in a National Association for School Boards, they have a purchasing consortium. So, that's what I mean when I say that they actually have other things that they're doing besides being a consortium.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you all.
Yes, sir, you, would you like to add to that? Okay.
The reason that this consortium's in front of you tonight is because we don't start with the schedule or the menu that's there, if this particular vendor's not available through this consortium that we have, our interior designer actually starts with, what do I need in that classroom, goes out and finds the manufacturers that satisfy the needs in that classroom, then goes to the consortium to try to find out where she can purchase it, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So, this will come up for a vote then at our next board meeting. Last item, I think, is, I think I need a motion, don't I? For approval of school buses.
A motion to take it off the table.
Okay. Take a motion to.
I move to take the, the tabled item of purchase of buses off the, off the table?
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins, any questions or discussion? None, I'll have a coordinator. Whoa, 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 whoa. I'm sorry.
So, who's making the amendment?
I guess I'll move to amend to buy 15 buses.
We, don't we have to vote on the motion to take it off the table? That's what I was, that's.
Okay.
So, we're going to do that first, and then we'll do that. So, let's call the roll on the motion. Well, I do, but, okay. No, we want to take it off the, we want to, we want to vote on the taking it off the table.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
God, yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
All right, now, Mr. Rollins, you have a motion you'd like to make.
I, I think I'll move that we buy 15 buses rather than 10, and that the administration take the cost for the, the extra five buses from some combination of the $300,000 furniture budget that was in the fiscal year '16 budget, and the $340,000, $20 salary budget, salary budgets that were moved over to, that were originally in Fund 20, but that got moved over into Fund 60.
Is there a second? Second.
Second, Dr. Herner, questions or discussions?
So, what was that total dollar amount?
Some combination of the.
Well, it would be 87,000 times five, whatever that is.
Okay.
Half a million.
Yeah. Which would be 435,000.
Okay. Well, that's the total?
The total additional.
The total additional.
Additional to the 875.
Right, of the five additional buses.
Okay, so that, so that now is, we verified, we know that, Todd, or Mr. Schmidt, that that number equals 15 buses? 15 total buses. Okay, so we did have 10, now we have 15, and we found it from this money that Mr. Rollins just stayed. Do I understand that correctly? Okay.
Yeah, well, that's my motion.
Yep. And we have a second. Any other questions? Ms. McCullough, you have your light on. Any other questions or discussion? I have the coordinator call the roll on the motion made by Mr. Rollins to buy 15 buses. They, oh, based, well, yeah. Yeah, ba- based on the funding recommendations of.
But which ones? Was it the, it was the 340, and you go to those salaries, and what's the rest of it? Where's the other 100?
The 300,000, I mean, so those two items, the 300,000 that's currently in the budget for furniture, not in the capital budget, but in the operating budget, so that's a total of 640,000, and we're adding 435,000 in buses, so, I mean, the administration can allocate that between those two items how it sees fit.
Ms. McCullough?
Actually, Mr. Rollins, you could keep the furniture in there and use the 340 plus the 101, right? $4,000 difference. I'm just saying.
But that's not what he said.
We don't have to make a decision, I would love for administration to decide how they want to spend the rest of what we.
Well, we didn't just steal from them, that they worked so hard to save.
Okay. I think we're ready. Are we ready?
Do you have to specify in the motion, or not?
He did. Some combination of those two funding sources. I think we're ready for a vote. Have coordinator.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
I like furniture, too. All right. Yeah, whatever, so. Mr. Wilson, you got some more buses. All righty, okay. Any other, are there any, Mrs. Powers, did you have your light on?
I do.
Okay.
I wanted.
Hold on, I got Mrs. Powers' absent floor.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions about what we approved tonight with the uniform security officers, and I guess it's not totally clear to me why it's a bid, not a contract, because didn't we have a contract with Andy Frain?
No, we did not. What's that?
And.
It was a bid that you approved tonight.
Right, no, 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 but Andy Frain, not.
Andy Frain was a bid.
So, the way we came about getting Andy Frain was, we went out with a request for proposal, it was a three-year endeavor, and they had a three-year contract, that contract expired this year, and that's why we went to bid.
Okay, so, but with a bid, we no longer have a contract with this secure text that we're going to go through?
We can still prepare a contract, and actually, Todd and I were talking about that, so for example, with GCA Custodial Services, that was a bid, but we actually have a contract.
Because my concern is that we've approved something tonight that is not a contract, and we've had that before, so, I mean, will there be a contract coming, or is that a discretionary item? I, I just.
So, historic, well, I'm, I'm speaking from historically, only being here just short of two years, but I know previously that there was not the consistent application of having, whether it's a bid or an RFP, and having a contract associated with it. But with, but what we're, what we've been practicing is when it is something of a larger dollar amount, when it is something of nature such as this, similar to the custodial services, that's a multi-year, that one actually has a contract, a physical contract associated with it, with the bid being used as backup or exhibits to the contract. And I'm going to assume that we're going to do the same thing with this one, with, with it being a multi-year and a large dollar amount.
And so, that, because my question would be, you know, around, where do we get assurances that all of our security guards will go through background checks, and all of those kinds of things that we require, we require?
Now, that.
So, we can do that without having a contract, but it sounds like you may be pulling sounds like you may be pulling one together?
Right, and those types of things are actually in our bid documents and templates, so they do sign forms, and they are required to provide to us that information, just as a part of being compliant with the bid document itself.
Okay.
There's some additional information. In order to be a security guard in the state of Illinois, you have to have a criminal background check in order to qualify for what they call a perk card. You cannot be employed as a security guard without the perk card, so that is an absolute requirement, and because they're a contract employee included in our paperwork, they get a background check done by us as well, so they get two.
Okay. I just was trying to understand why this was under consent items as compared to a regular contract and all that kind of thing. And then the other part is around the execution and communication of this. I mean, I know that three of our high schools have new principals, and they wouldn't have known the old security guards anyway, but our security guards tend to be an extension of their staff, so can you speak to the hiring, the training, the implementation, the communication?
Absolutely.
Specifically at high schools, obviously middle schools as well, but...
I, I truly believe this will be invisible to the staff and the students and the principals at the buildings. 95% of the guards will be hired on with the new company, so there'll be no turnover in that regard, and I know that they were just speaking with the account manager in the office to see what it's going to take to make that happen. We did build into the packet that current employees have, I'm not going to say first right of refusal, but have preference in hiring over others. And any company coming into a situation like this wants a smooth transition, so they want to bring on board as many of the people that are currently with us on with them for the next year, and I just got assurances from them on that. There was a question earlier about how they were able to build in the price decreases, they explained that that was capital expenditure. So, upfront, they're going to have to buy some computers, some telephones, and things like that, and that's where they were able to come down in subsequent years.
Okay. So, I mean, by the same token, I guess, I'll just put it very pointedly, is Janice going to steal all the security guards from Guilford and take them over to Auburn with her?
I think Janice will be very happy with the guard staff at Auburn, because quite honestly, they are, they are one of my, they're an excellent team, period.
Okay.
They work well together.
All right, thank you.
Wait a minute, Mr. Deal, so I didn't understand why you changed the procedure and went out for bid, when last time when you got Andy Frain, you just put out a request for proposal. Why didn't we choose to do it differently?
Okay, when we first started doing this, we had several companies that didn't quite last for lengths of time, so we were seeking different methods of employing the guards in different manners. So we went out with requests for proposals. We finally got it down to a science, and we're very comfortable with the current way we do it. We have excellent training, we have excellent staff, the turnover rate has been phenomenal under Andy Frain, they've done a really good job with that, and I think we've got a stable environment where now it's just a matter of, the contract expired, there's really no reason to change the method, the way we're doing it. So we wanted to go out and get a bid, similar to what we did with GCA, so that we would, number one, retain the guards and still enjoy a price decrease, so we could go ahead and use that money for other things as well.
But in the past, when we had issues, it was when we went out for bid, right? So, it worked real well when we did this request for proposal, and Andy Frain was working well, and yeah, and I want to save money, but it just, I hope it doesn't bite us.
My wishes exactly.
Is there any other business for tonight? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are adjourned at 9:30.